Please join us and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey, councilmember Page, councilmember Wassinger, councilmember O'Meara, councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. With approval, the Journal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. The Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, sixth district.
Receive, file, and refer it to the Department of Planning.
So ordered.
Item number three, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive and file.
Item number.
And that will be the order.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, seventh district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read, do we have add-on?
Yes, sir. Item number one.
Receive, file, and the appointments be approved as requested. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive, file, and refer it to the council as a committee of the whole. The proposed budget be made available to the public from and after this date. The council will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget at a special meeting of the council to be scheduled as soon as the matter can be heard. And the administrative director published notice of this hearing as required by law, and a proof of publication of notice be filed with the office of the county clerk. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There will be a, as of right now, would be a public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November 17th, at 6:30 PM, or soon thereafter, the council meeting. That will be held right here in this council chamber. Report of the county executive.
Nothing further to report this evening.
We do have a report of a special committee. I move that the report of the Public Appropriations Committee hearing on Tuesday, October 27th, 2015, with regard to the PC 1015 Winter Brothers Material Company, a pending request for CUP NU and FPNU be received, filed, adopted, and submitted. The planning commission's denial be upheld, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. The report is adopted. Now we will move to public forum.
We have ten speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
We have ten speakers. If you would please, when your name is called, come forward, please state your name and address, and you would please keep your, we would request you keep your comments to three minutes or less.
First speaker this evening is Rhonda Wren.
My address is 878 Wieland Avenue, University City, Missouri, 63130. I am a long time, a long time resident of St. Louis County. There is a poem by Langston Hughes that is called "I Too Sing America." I would like to read that to you, and I'll keep it under three minutes. "I too sing America. I am the darker brother. They send me to eat in the kitchen when company comes. But I laugh and eat well and grow strong. Tomorrow I'll be at the table when company comes. Nobody dares say to me, 'Eat in the kitchen then.'" Besides, they'll see how beautiful I am and be ashamed. I just wanted you all to know, especially County Executive Stenger and Chief Belmar, that I was disappointed that you didn't show up to the November 1st Accountability Meeting. My question is, will you come to the table on November 23rd at 6:00 PM? Or will we have to continue to eat at the table alone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andre Anderson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Anderson. I stay in University City, 7871 Trenchen, 63130. I have a question as well as a statement. We realize that there are possibly, I would say, 6,000 offenders will be released from DOC. Even though there is funds to help the offenders, I'm wondering why the funds is being held and not having facilitators or shelter to house the offenders when they come. I know for a fact that it gonna be an uproar, you got people coming from overseas, and you got offenders. If you all have funds, it's not helping those that's coming from Department of Corrections. And then the crime rate goes higher than it is, it must be addressed to the county executive. I mean, what I want to know is you all gonna do anything to help defenders better themselves when they come out of facility, like give them shelter, help them eat? Because it's getting, to me, it's getting worser by the minute. And I would say the funds that y'all will held in, not only is you putting their lives in jeopardy, who have done their time and come home to try to do right, but you putting the taxpayer's lives in jeopardy. You're putting your lives in jeopardy. Because when a man is hungry and thirsty, he will find a way to eat by any means necessary. So I'm addressing of issue, whereas hoping that y'all could come together and speak on what shall we do? Because one thing, you can rest assured, it's not gonna be in the city any longer. It gonna be out there in Frontak, Ladoo, Chesterfield, and what I'm speaking of, the crime rate. So I'm saying this because I'm a motivational speaker. I can only do so much to try to help those who come home from being confined. But if I don't get, have no guidance to help them, my hands is tied. So therefore, I want y'all to take this in consideration, that those that's incarcerated, that's coming out to society, give them a chance. Help them, so they can help themselves. So basically, the bottom line is why I'm here, is to be a voice for those that's confined, because they are citizens, just as well as everybody that's on this panel.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lauren Lyerla.
Hi, my name is Lauren Lyerla. I live at 12058 Westford Drive in Maryland Heights for the last 18 years. I'm a 10-year member of Emerson Unitarian Universalist Chapel in Wildwood, and I represent a fledgling organization, WE CAN, which stands for the West County Community Action Network. When you ran for county executive, Mr. Stenger, I remembered your vote on House Bill 279 for LGBTQ protections in housing, employment, and public accommodations, and I planned to vote for you. Then, your response to issues raised by Mike Brown's killing and the subsequent uprising in Ferguson was lacking, to the point that many black voters in the county were urging each other to vote for your opponent, to send a message that their vote had to be earned, not taken for granted. I found myself very much on the fence, as a lifelong Democrat, a supporter of LGBTQ equality, but absolutely a supporter of racial justice and the Black Lives Matter movement. In the end, I couldn't bring myself to vote for Rick Stream, but I promised myself that I would keep an eye on you and hold you accountable to issues of racial justice, which is what I'm doing tonight. You didn't come. A thousand people were there at a meeting, months in the making, to work on issues of racial justice in our area, and you weren't there. As county executive, it is not just your job, but your moral obligation to work for all residents of St. Louis County. The people are ready for change, ready to do the work, which they showed Sunday by being there, ready for justice. And we need our leaders to do the work and to be on board. You have another chance, November 23rd, 6:00 PM. Dotson and Slay have committed to being there. You need to be there. You need to be there with open ears and with an open mind, and we're all watching. Thank you.
Next speaker is Helen Rogers.
Hello. My name's Helen. I'm from Ferguson. Last year, we were asked to move from the streets to the policy table, and so many people worked so hard to put on this event last Sunday, so that we could present to you the policy changes that the Ferguson Commission has put forth, so that the people could really talk about these policies to, straight to you, and how these things are going to make a difference in our city. And I can't even express the disappointment that was felt in the room when over a thousand people did not see one of your faces there. You know, it's, it's just, it's very disappointing when people are supposed to represent you, and then they won't listen to the largest thing that they've put forth this year, which is the Ferguson Commission. So I really urge you all to be there. I know that your community would not only appreciate it, but would be behind you and would support you in everything that you're moving to do, if you would just stand behind what these policies mean to everyone, and just make your faces shown, and show everyone that you, that you care, and that you want to be there, and you want to be listening to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Williams. I live at 3912 Shenandoah in the city of St. Louis, but I work in Chesterfield, Missouri. And so what happens in the county is very important to me. On Sunday, November 1st, I was at the Public Accountability Meeting, along with a thousand other people or more, to hear about Ferguson Commission report and to make commitments to all work together to bring about the policy changes that are called for in that report. It was a really nice fall afternoon. There were a lot of other things I could have been doing. There were a lot of other things that everybody in that room could have been doing, but I believed that that was where I needed to be. And I was very disappointed, County Executive Stenger, that you did not also feel that you needed to be there. Luckily, there's another opportunity. On November 23rd, at 6:00 PM, there will be another meeting, and we are asking you to come to the table. We would also like for Chief Dotson to be, Chief Belmar to be present at that meeting. Mayor Slay and Chief Dotson have both agreed to be there, and we hope that you will come to the table and join us in making commitments on the policy changes that are called for by the Ferguson Commission. Thank you.
My name is Susan Clark. I live at 9836 Wildyear Road in Ladoo. I can't think of anything more pressing in this community at this time than dealing with and addressing the racial strife, the social justice issues that have been put before us. And I, "put before us" is such an inadequate term, but we'll use that for now. There's nothing that matters more right now in St. Louis than addressing this. We can't grow economically, we can't, I mean, nothing. And for you not to be there Sunday is heartbreaking. And frankly, I would have hoped all of you would have been there Sunday. I would have hoped your staffs would have been there. I can't imagine anybody involved in St. Louis County not feeling that what the Ferguson Commission report was recommending was worth time, commitment, and energy. If you all aren't willing to be out in public discussing these issues, we don't have a I beg you to please, please attend on the 23rd. I know it's Thanksgiving week. I know there are a lot of other things going on. But if anything needs the support of the government and the officials in this community, it's the Ferguson Commission's work. It's the respectable, power-based work that's been done this last year. And if the power brokers and respectable politicians in this community won't support it or even discuss it, you don't leave those of us who have spent time on the street with many options. And that's a tragedy.
Next speaker is Abir Motian.
Good evening. My name is Abir Motian, and I am homeless, and I represent all of St. Louis homeless. And I am also the founder of Global Bridge to the Future Fusion for Life Foundation. I want to help the people who get out of jail. I want to help people who have gone out of jail, who are in jail, and who are innocent, who have never committed a crime, who are homeless, or people who need rescuing, or are in a crisis, or are kicked out of their homes, or if there's a disaster. I want to help them. But I have a problem. We got some people who are actually hurting me right now. They have airplanes, and they have helicopters, doing intentional sound harassment to affect our bodies and health. They have ambulances and fire trucks harass us and makes, and idle us, and make sound harassment. They do it on purpose to hurt my friend and I. We are homeless. We shouldn't be oppressed. We don't, we have been trying to get into a shelter, and nobody wants to take us, because I'm advocating for people, and they just want to retaliate. Now, I put in a grant on the 19th of October for this shelter to go, to move forward. And on the 21st this year, they stopped my car, and I had somebody donate $60 to me so that we can have my tar, my car towed to the mechanic. But the police, Officer Rabbit with Richmond Heights Police, stopped us on the highway, accusing us of my car being stolen, and it wasn't. He did it so that he can hint to the driver to drive on the shoulder where the lines are, so they can wear out my tires, and then so he can hit the brakes so many times, so he can ruin my brakes. And then he told the mechanics to put a large dent on the hood, the top of my car, and then make a hole so that moisture can seep into my car, so I can fight with the mechanic, so that the mechanics can cover for them. He told the mechanics to put oil under the car, so that they can cover up for the EMP devices that police aimed at my car to stop my car. Now, I am a Muslim. I'm an American-born citizen. I was born and raised here most of my life. I am retaliated against. I am discriminated against. It's not fair. I mean, when I saw Steve Stenger, you know, wanting people to vote for him, and all the nice words that I heard from him, I'm like, you know, this guy's gonna make a big difference. And I said, "I'm going to vote." And I'm still not giving up on you. But I just want people to put themselves in my shoes and in my place, and feel how we feel. I am a mother. I'm a parent. I'm not treated right by Judge Terry Weiss, who's part of the Family Court Commissioner. He's connected to people, the referee of my unemployment. They're putting me, they want me to be poor, so that they can pump me up and see what I'm gonna do, and so that they can hurt me, and so that my hair can fall out from the airplane.
Thank you.
Just please, please reconsider, and don't forget about us, please. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Christian Blackman. I am a longtime resident of Ferguson, Missouri. So, on the table, everybody's talking about the table, right? So, leave the streets, come to the table. Quite frankly, we've been sitting at a table a long time, probably for too long, and that's what forced many people to go to the streets. There's a lot of bad policy that continuously to be a thing that's like not okay, and it's not okay more than likely for a demographic of people that don't look like any of you that's sitting up here now, right? So, November 1st, Public Accountability Meeting, a lot of people were in the room, a lot of the elected officials were in the room, but there was not enough of those there. Stenger, you know, I know that you have a baby on the way, so that's why you weren't able to be there. So we're giving you another opportunity, another invite on November 23rd, to be at the table. So you, Chief Belmar, we're asking you to be there. Slay said he'll be there. Dotson said he'll be there. We're hoping that some other people that weren't there will also be there, because quite frankly, if you're not, people are gonna be in the streets. Like, people aren't gonna leave the streets, because it seems to be the only way that some of you kind of get the urgency in what the, what was reported in this Ferguson report, the many, many months, the many, many people, the many, many working groups, the many, many hours that was put into making these recommendations and these calls to action, not just recommendations, but calls to action. We need things to be moving. Not to read it, "Oh, this is nice, we support it," but there's no work being done behind it. This is the people, the people's report. So, we're gonna do our part. We hope that you all do yours. So November 23rd, we would love to see you in the place, at the table with us, to really get this Ferguson report moving. Thank you.
Next speaker is Reverend Krista Taves.
My name is Reverend Krista Taves. My address is 1470 St. Paul Road, Baldwin, Missouri. On August the 7th, after 10 years of living in this country as a resident alien, I walked into the US government office and took the oath of allegiance and became an American citizen. And the reason I did that is because after all the racial violence and the racial pain of this city became unveiled, I realized that I needed to be at the table. And I couldn't be at the table, fully at the table, as a resident alien. I had to be a citizen to be at the table. And so I took the oath, so that I could come to the table and be part of the solution for our city, and part of the process of healing, and part of the process of racial justice. And when I came to the table on Sunday afternoon at 3:00 PM, I was waiting to see my county executive there. I was waiting to see the police chief of the St. Louis County there, and I was very disappointed not to see my, my, my representatives and my police chief at the table. I think that we are at a moment in history, and I want you all to be on the right side of it. I want you all to take your place at the table with us. We're waiting for you. The Ferguson Commission policy recommendations are before you. They are a path forward, and I want you to walk on that path with us. So I hope that you will be there. You've got a second chance to be there on November 23rd at 6:00 PM, along with Mayor Slay and Dotson. I would like all of you to be there, and I would like my county executive and my police chief to be there. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chad Schubert.
Good evening. My name is Chad Schubert. I work just around the corner here. And on this Sunday, I showed up at the Public Accountability Meeting. It was really inspiring to me to see a thousand citizens show up, looking to create change, looking to move policy. I've participated in demonstrations on the street, because I feel that that's helped move us to this point. But I feel that the real change has to happen on the policy level. And it was, it was inspiring to be there with a thousand other people. And there were some exec, some public officials there, but not nearly as many as were invited or as we were expecting. And so I invite not only all of you to join us on this upcoming meeting on November 23rd, but to take a look through the Forward to Ferguson Report, because there's a lot of good calls to action. There's a lot of collaboration coming together, which I think is very inspiring for us to see, as a city, that from a tragedy, there's organizations that never worked together before that are pulling together and saying, "These are things we can all get behind." So I encourage each of you to find those calls to action within the Ferguson Report that you can champion, that you can get behind, and help us as citizens create that policy change, because we can't change a policy on our own, but we can elect you all to help us change that policy. So I encourage you to join us, to discuss. I encourage you to read through the report and find the different action items that you can champion, and to let us know what those are, so that we can help you champion those and help create policy. Because I know it can be divisive sometimes, and I do think that effort is needed, and that the movement in the streets has pushed this action, which I'm all about. But we also want to work together to make sure that policy change does happen, and I think that only happens when you guys are, men and women, are representing us, and that we can work alongside you to make this happen. So I'd like you to join us and to find those causes that you can champion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few things to mention. First of all, I filed another complaint against County Executive Stenger with the Missouri Attorney General's Office for violating the Sunshine Law. I had requested copies of emails having to do with the appointment of Tanya Aldada as municipal judge, someone with less than three years' experience as a lawyer, who had just moved to St. Louis County the month before. This follows a complaint for two other Sunshine Law violations by the county executive earlier this year. In June, the Attorney General's Office sent Mr. Stenger a letter of warning, reminding him of his need to follow the law. Despite also enclosing five copies of a guide to the Sunshine Law, it didn't seem to do any good. The county executive also appointed Craig Concanon as a municipal judge in April. The lawyer was one of Mr. Stenger's largest contributors, with $21,001 of contributions. Mr. Concanon has now contributed $3,500 more to the Stenger campaign, according to campaign reports. This takes the total contributions to Citizens for Steve Stenger to $24,501. On another matter, Mr. Stenger is now proposing new standards for police officers in all of St. Louis County. It's been questioned whether this could comply to the entire county. County executive says, the county councilor opinion says it can. When asked for a copy of any such opinion, Mr. Crane says he will not disclose it. Where is that open government promised by Mr. Stenger when he was running for county executive? It's interesting, too, that the county executive proposed the standards be met in six months. This comes from someone who promised a top-to-bottom forensic audit of county government to be done in his first 100 days of office. It's now 10 days later, and no audit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That will conclude the public forum. We'll move to introduction of bills, please.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant totaling up to $294,503 from the St. Louis County Children's Service Fund, appropriate to the St. the same for various services for county youth provided by the Department of Human Services, and authorizing the Director of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill number two sixty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept grants totaling up to four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. The Missouri Secretary of State appropriating same for use by the Board of Election Commissioners for election-related expenses, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number two sixty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance transferring five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents from the unappropriated balance of the voter transaction funds to the unappropriated balance of the Election Services Fund. Bill number two seventy, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Summit Strategies Incorporated for consulting services in connection with St. Louis County Retirement Plans. Bill number two seventy-one, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance approving the application of preliminary plans for the amended development in the C.A. Plan Commercial District of Retractive Land, subject to conditions, PC twenty-three dash fifteen, St. Louis Hills Auto, PC oh-four oh-six, James H. Miller. Bill number two seventy-two, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, and ordinance running the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and official zoning district maps, by changing the boundaries of the Arthur Residence District to the Seaview Neighborhood Business District as provided herein, PC twenty-four dash fifteen, Joseph Lo Piccolo. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Uh, perfection of bills?
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Please hold Bill number eight, that's the order.
Bill number two sixty-four, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number two sixty-four. Say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two sixty-four is perfected.
Bill number two sixty-five, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number two sixty-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two sixty-five is perfected.
Bill number two sixty-six, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move to perfect Bill number two sixty-six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number two sixty-six is perfected. Final passage of bills, please.
Bill number fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Um, I move to hold Bill number fifty-two. That will be the order.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Hold Bill number one sixteen, and that will be the order.
Bill number two fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill number two fifty-five. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two fifty-five, there are five ayes and two absent.
Number two fifty-five is finally passed.
Bill number two fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I move for final passage of Bill number two fifty-six. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two fifty-six, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number two fifty-six is finally passed.
Bill number two fifty-seven, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I move for final passage of Bill number two fifty-seven. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two fifty-seven, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number two fifty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number two fifty-eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Move for final passage of Bill number two fifty-eight. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two fifty-eight, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number two fifty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number two fifty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill number two fifty-nine. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two fifty-nine, there are five ayes and two absent.
Number two fifty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number two sixty, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger. I move for final passage of Bill number two sixty.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two sixty, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number two sixty is finally passed.
Bill number two sixty-one, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I move for final passage of Bill number two sixty-one.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two sixty-one, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number two sixty-one is finally passed.
Bill number two sixty-two, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of Bill number two sixty-two. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two sixty-two, there are five ayes and two absent.
Number sixty-two is finally passed.
Bill number two sixty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move final passage of Bill number two sixty-three. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara, Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number two sixty-three, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number two sixty-three is finally passed.
We have no resolutions this evening, Mr. Chair, so we'll move on to unfinished business under unfinished business, item number one, Third District. Uh, the license be approved as requested, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And moving on to new business, Mr. Chair, we have three prepared orders this evening.
Move approval of, uh, orders one, two, and three. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Orders one, two, and three are adopted.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.